We will be representing tonight in one fashion or another, which include the Redevelopment Agency, the Airport Authority, the Rail Authority, the Water District, the Library. I don't think I have missed any, but they will all open concurrently. Custom and habit of this council is we begin every meeting first with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight will be given by Minister Curtis Green from the Burning Bush Baptist Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Chief of Police, Captain Mark Taylor.
I'll offer a word of prayer. Lord, we come to you first, Lord, giving thanks and honor to you, Lord God, for being God and God all by yourself. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Lord, your word says now that we are to pray for those that are in authority over us, Lord God. So I lift up this city council, the city council members to you right now, Lord God. Give them wisdom to make right decisions, Lord God, and give them the courage to carry them out, Lord God. Lord, they've been not only taking on responsibility for themselves, but for the affairs of a city, Lord God. So grant them the wisdom and the courage, Lord, to just carry on and let them do, Lord God, and bless them, Lord God. Lord, we thank you once again for this day. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America, and the Republic on which it stands, one nation, one God, with the visible liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome each and every one of you this evening. I am going to deviate just a little bit from our normal protocol. Our normal protocol is to go to public comment, but before we go to public comment tonight, we are going to go to that part of the city council agenda, which deals with a special presentation that is going to be made by the Bad News Bears to the city of Victorville. And the reason that I've got to advance it is because the lady who is going to present it is one of the most cranky, grumpy individuals known to mankind, and she's got to go home and get her sleep. So for that reason, I will ask Doris Davies to come forward and make her presentation. I also should add that she's probably the most generous person in the entire city of Victorville.
Mayor Caldwell and council members, I'm amazed at how this place looks between being in the hospital and being glued to the house. I didn't know the place, but it just is gorgeous. I've got a couple of things that I have to do, okay?
You can do anything you want to do.
I beg your pardon?
You can do anything you want to do.
Did you hear that, folks? Remember that, Deputy?
Right.
That'll teach you to open your mouth up. Okay, I want to, I want to, I want to make it real, real clear. I'm not unsteady on my feet, it's just your silly seats that lift up, okay? Okay, the Victorville Kiwanis Club, I am not a member of it. The first chance I get that I can join them because they're, I'm not running the other clubs down, I really like that organization. I like the way they meet at lunchtime and they, they don't worry about Brown's rules or who are anybody's rules, they just have, have, get stuff done. But the Kiwanis Club is a terrific organization. I think, to me, it relates a lot to the Bears because they're very involved with mostly kids and children's activities. So don't ask me why, but the Kiwanis Club sent a check to the Bears for $10,000. I have that check. I deposited it, and I've made up another check from the Bears. Can you get out of that seat, or do you have to stay up there, Mayor Caldwell? Hi, John. Folks, I don't worry about Robert's rules or anybody's rules. Mayor Caldwell, I would like to present this check to you for $10,000 from the Bears and from the Kiwanis. If it weren't for the Kiwanis, you probably wouldn't be getting the $10,000 check. Show that so it'll, it'll, it'll show to the folks. Check is going to the city, city for the playground equipment at Sunset Ridge Park.
Oh, wow.
I want to explain. I want to explain something to you folks out there. Sometimes I don't pronounce names right, and I don't pronounce words right, but I come from Brooklyn, and we have our own language in Brooklyn, okay? Now, I also have, Mayor Caldwell, two pledges to add to this. One pledge is from the Tatum Foundation for 5,000 bucks to go to the playground equipment. And, as you call me the has-been, Doris Davies from, from the Bears, the Doris Davies on a loan is going to give you 5,000 bucks towards the equipment too. But I'm not, I'm not done. I'm not done. Terry Caldwell knows sometimes you can't trust me because the Tatum Foundation and the Bears, I have some strings attached to it, okay? The Tatum Foundation and the Bears are going to give you a challenge, Terry Caldwell. Do you know, I mean, no.
No.
Do you know much about playground equipment?
No.
Oh, well, I realize that. It's back, it's back in your days. Do you know what monkey bars are? It's not where you go get a drink. You know what monkey bars are? Well, okay. Monkey bars are one pole here and one pole here, and if you put the ladder over the top, you just, you just go like this, okay? Do that?
I don't know.
Well, typical mayor. Okay, I want to know, this is what the challenge is. You would have to keep up with this old broad to climb the length of the monkey bars. Now, if you expect, accept this challenge, there's 10,000 bucks from Tatum and Doris that you'll get. Will you accept the challenge?
I'm in.
Don't have to dress for it. People won't come out to watch you do that, I'm sure. And I don't know exactly where it will be, but you raise your hand if you will accept the challenge, because I don't believe you. Put the check down.
Well, this is, this is really a sneaky act. You know, I, I was given a heads up that there was going to be a challenge. I didn't know I was going to have to accept the challenge to make a fool out of myself. But I've done a lot of things for this city. Doris and I used to play racquetball, and she was so aggressive playing racquetball that she ended up putting me on crutches for six weeks. And she was pretty darn happy about doing that. But yeah, I'll, I'll take the challenge, and what happens, though, if I beat you?
If you beat me, it'll be in the New York and Brooklyn Times. Okay, you accept the challenges, the challenge. I don't know, you'll have to trust me to find the spot and the place and all that good stuff, and maybe if you've got any sense, you'll get ahold of somebody to teach you. Okay, let me see your arm, put it right here. You see what you got here, folks? Okay, I've got to get out of here because you've got a meeting to run. But in closing, I want to encourage the other council members and any other organizations that would like to contribute a small amount to this equipment that'll be at the playground at Sunset Ridge Park. It would really be great appreciated. And Terry is a friend of mine, so I don't care what I say or do to him. Most of the stuff he'll do whatever I tell him, because to tell you the truth, I think he's scared of me.
I am scared of you. Well, up of the city, I want to obviously say thank you to the Bears, to Kiwanis, to Doris. Doris has spent the better part of her adult life in this community doing things for kids. She has no interest in doing anything for herself, and she has no interest in doing anything for adults. Her entire focus is kids. And she gets mad at me when I tell this story, but it's a story that I tell whenever I have an opportunity. A long time ago, before most of you, only one of me had been around here then with me was Felix. Everyone else was, you're now newcomers. But Doris and, and her deceased husband Cliff found out that our school district, our elementary school district, didn't have enough money for pianos so kids couldn't get piano lessons. And Doris anonymously went out, Doris and her husband Cliff, went out and purchased pianos for our elementary school district and swore the school district to secrecy. Problem is, my wife and my law partner were on the Board of Trustees, and I don't keep very good secrets. So I want the entire community to know what kind of a person Doris is and what she has done for the kids of our community. She'll never, ever be replaced. Doris Davies. I'm going to turn the check, the real one and the imagined one, over to the city clerk. Doris, we may need to use some of the money to increase the mayor's medical insurance premiums. Okay, Doris, if you want to go home, go to bed, that's, we, we won't be offended. If you want to hang around, though, you're certainly more than welcome. Okay, item one on all of the agendas, the city council agenda, the RDA agenda, the library, the rail, the airport authority, is public comment. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state statute for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, or the Redevelopment Agency, or the authorities, or the Water District on any subject that is within our area of responsibility jurisdiction. If you wish to address the council under public comment, we ask that you fill out one of these white cards, they're available in the foyer, and pass it to the city clerk. That way, we'll have the information necessary to communicate with you should whatever you tell us require that we schedule you for a future council meeting, or request more information, or supply you with information at your request. Under public comment, because we have no idea what you're going to say, and therefore there's no opportunity to do any research or any preparation, as a general rule, the council does not respond to public comment at the, at the meeting. We will respond subsequent to the meeting to the extent that it's appropriate to do so. Under public comment, you're limited to three minutes. And in addition to public comment, there's later some public hearing items, and we would also, if you're going to speak to us under the public hearings, ask that you fill out one of these white cards and pass it to the city clerk. I will now go to item one, public comment on all of the agendas, and I will call the cards in the order that they were given to me. First card is Yvonne Mashek, if I have pronounced it correctly.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I come to you again asking for police routes for those of us that live in and around Hook Center and the park. We are being inundated by some very unsavory types of people that are in the park, that our children, we have fear for our kids over there. On Saturday, there was a large contingency of a club. It was very nerve-wracking for those of us that had children in the park, and there was no police at all. I'm asking you again to please have the police step up, the surveillance of our areas. We have break-ins, we have children that are being attacked coming from school. We need help. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will make sure that the Chief of Police, who's sitting right in the front audience, front row, get in touch with you about this. Second card is Jackie Nutting from ABC Southern California.
Good evening, Mayor Caldwell, and distinguished members of the city council. As you mentioned, my name is Jackie Nutting, and I am with the Associated Builders and Contractors of Southern California. It is an association, as you know, of merit shop contractors or non-union contractors, and we are continuing to watch the California unions for reliable energy as they continue to pelt this council with relentless attempts to force you into signing a project labor agreement by delaying the permits that you need via the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District and the California Energy Commission. We are aware of the lawsuit date on May 23rd and plan on attending in solidarity with you as you continue to uphold free enterprise by making certain that all contractors, not just union, and their employees, whether union or merit shop, are given equal opportunities to bid and work on the projects in the city of Victorville, particularly the Hybrid Two Power Plant. Thank you, Mayor Caldwell, and members of the city council. Please continue the good fight.
Thank you, Ms. Nutting. Next card is Chuck Hanson, High Desert Bicycle Coalition. Mr. Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor Caldwell and city council members. My name is Chuck Hanson. I live at 22113 Sioux Road in Apple Valley. And before I start my business, I just want to make a couple of comments. I like your new facilities, and I like the fact that you put "In God We Trust" up there. And this is the second year in a row that we will have the bike ride down Bear Valley Road to kick off National Bike Week and honoring May 16th as National Bike Work Day. And I give the city clerk some flyers, given in a date, place, and time of the day, and also there's a copy of Ryan Orr's column from Monday, April 7th, that maybe you've read it. And I hope this year's ride will show better response than was shown last year when not one of the mayors or council members participated. And, well, I'm hoping for something better. You're all invited. And I just talked to Doris out there, and I invited her to go. And maybe she'll challenge Terry Caldwell to go.
Just what I need.
And that's all I, that's all I have. Thank you.
I, I just want to respond, at least you think I'm a coward. I am recovering from very recent surgery to my left knee, so I don't think I'll be in a bicycle ride right away.
Okay, but if you read it, if you just show up and say hello to the bicyclist.
I could probably hobble up and do that.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I'm going, maybe you can't ride, but, but your appearance would be appreciated.
We'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson. Next up is Eric Kristen, if I've pronounced it correctly.
Thank you, Mayor Caldwell, members of the council. My name is Eric Kristen. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We are a statewide organization comprised of over 300 construction firms that was formed 10 years ago solely to oppose what are known as project labor agreements. For those in the audience that aren't aware, as was mentioned earlier in earlier comments, a South San Francisco law firm that acts as a front group for state labor unions is currently holding the Victorville Two Hybrid Power Project hostage to its environmental extortion, or what we refer to as greenmail, in order to extract out of the city and developer a project labor agreement. And we just wanted to show up tonight to encourage you to continue to stand firm against this type of environmental extortion. We are following this closely, and as was demonstrated by the development and creation of this beautiful facility, and despite comments that were made in the paper earlier last month, merit shop contractors do in fact not only build projects such as the City Hall, but also power plants throughout the state and throughout the region and the country. So we just wanted to encourage you to stand firm against this extortion. I just happened to attend a San Luis Obispo County hearing of the CEC, the California Energy Commission, this past weekend, where a 177-megawatt solar power plant is being held hostage to cure's environmental extortion. Not even a solar project is viewed as being environmentally friendly enough for cure. That is until a PLA is signed on that project. And the owner there is standing firm, Ozra Development, they are not going to succumb to the pressure, and it was an interesting meeting to, to attend, but I just wanted to let you know you're not alone in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, that's all the cards that I have for public comment.
Sorry, got caught off guard a little bit tonight with this Doris Davies presentation. Well, I have a card for you, and I'll turn it in.
All right.
Name's Norm Miller. I'm chairman of the Golden Triangle Ad-Hoc Committee, and I just want to really express my appreciation for what she has done for the Sunset Ridge Park area. And in thinking about it, I think I'm going to put my money on Doris for the monkey bar thing.
That's a smart move. I will too. Are there any other public comments that didn't get a card in? Then we will digress for the second time. I will turn the podium over to Councilman Cabralas, who has been the spark plug since the inception of our banner program, which honors men and women from our community that are involved in fighting for freedom in Afghanistan and Iraq. Councilman Rudy Cabralas.
Once again, it's my pleasure and privilege to be here to recognize and honor the military from Victorville who are serving in Afghanistan and Iraq, and also to recognize the sacrifices that their families make when our soldiers leave for battle. So the first one that we're going to recognize tonight is Adrian Sanchez, and his father Alfred is accepting the plaque for him.
My wife and I, including Adrian's fiancee and her mom, Oscar, the brother of Adrian, and the grandkids, Maria, I want to thank Monica for keeping us informed of the status of the banner, and John, Alman, Rudy.
The council.
And the council in the city of Victorville, especially for recognizing our troops in Iraq. This is very important because as a Vietnam veteran, there's nothing more than to receive support from the family, and especially from the community where he's from, and I'm sure this will add to the high morale that's now evident in Iraq. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Next is James M. Stem, US Army. His wife Jessica will be accepting the plaque for him.
Um, I'm, my children are also going to accept this on his behalf as well because they've, I mean, they're, it's affected them quite a bit. But just like the last gentleman said, the communities standing beside our soldiers means so much, and I'm sorry. I wanted to thank the council members and Monica as well for all, you know, this is unbelievable. My husband doesn't know. I wanted to keep it a surprise. He's going to be so, I mean, it's going to be unbelievable for him to know that his city stands behind him, and it's just a great honor, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Michael Campos Jr., US Army, and his mother Terry will be accepting the plaque for him.
It's not Terry, it's Tammy.
I, one good thing about this day and age is we have internet and we have phone. I did talk to my son this morning from Iraq. He does know that I am receiving this, and I want to share a little story that he told me two weeks ago. He's in Iraq, and on the border of his, where he's at, they found a three-year-old, three-day-old baby. And all the men in his platoon all played dad to that baby till the government came to do what they do with the babies. But he said it was the cutest thing he'd seen, and he, they all got a chance to take care of this baby that somebody couldn't take care of. So I wanted to share that story with you. And thank you, everybody, for the recognition that they're giving him.
Thank you. See, having your son with you.
This is Michael's middle brother. He has another brother and an older sister, and we're always praying for Michael every day.
Thank you very much, Tammy. You notice we have eight banners, but only three of the families could be here, so we'll, we're going to keep the other going to keep the other five in the chambers here until our next council meeting. And the three that were recognized tonight will be placed on the banners on the street. And by the way, we do have, we have 33 banners today. By May, we'll have 40 banners on our streets. That means 40 individuals from our city are serving in combat. So let's give them another round of applause and give the families a round of applause. These banners run about $300, and probably with the heart words, about $360 apiece. And the only way we can keep this program going is through the donations and contributions that are not only the business people, but individuals in the community provide for us. So at this time, we do have an individual or a business that we're going to recognize as Maderos and Associates, and they'll be accepting a plaque for their contribution to our military program. And Donald Maderos?
Again, we're very grateful that we have businesses and individuals in our community that support our military also, along with the city council. This is presented to Maderos and Associates for your recognition and support of our men and women in uniform. City of Victorville Military Banner Program. Donald, thank you very much.
I had the opportunity to serve the military back in a different war. It was kind of unpopular then also. And the line gets blurred when you come back. It was politics. Unfortunately, the military didn't receive the praise they should have gotten. What the patriotism and what politics of war is. We're all here to support our military.
Felix, why, Rudy's coming back up. I see you have some young men with you that you probably would like to come and introduce. Felix Diaz.
Thank you, Terry. Mayor, stand up. These two in front are the Arius Brothers, Michael Campos and Tiger. I can't remember your first name.
Eric Tiger.
Eric Tiger. Michael was a member of our organization, and as I go around riding around and seeing all the banners, there are several that were in my unit. And we're very proud of all these guys that have served and are serving. And to thank Doris, if it wasn't for Doris, believe me, we wouldn't have a unit. She's the one that supports us and has been supporting us for the last six, seven years. So thank for the opportunity.
You bet, Felix. Thank you, those four young men. Okay, we will go to the library board agenda, and I'll refer this to Mr. Hunter, who, as our council lies on, to the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item two is revisions to the agenda. I don't believe there's any revisions.
No revisions.
Item three is consent calendar. There's two items, A and B, February 5th and February 19th minutes, which we need to vote on.
There are motion?
No motion.
Vote.
That's all on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
That concludes the library agenda. We'll go to the rail authority agenda. Item, there are no revisions to the rail authority. Item three is consent calendar. Questions or comments?
Second.
Been moved and seconded for approval. May we vote? That would conclude the rail authority agenda. The airport authority agenda has a request to remove item four, which has to do with a closed session item. So that leaves us with item three, which is the consent calendar. Questions or comments?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. May we vote? That would conclude the airport authority agenda. Mr. D. Bortnowsky, just for clarification, we're removing all of the items listed on item four under closed session.
That's correct. It's one closed session item, but it pertains to different parcels of property.
Okay. The Water District agenda, there are no revisions, so we go to item three, which is the consent calendar.
With approval?
Second.
Vote. Item four is a request to accept the notice of completion on the construction Zone Two Interconnecting Pipeline Project. Questions or comments from members of the Water District Board?
Approval?
Second.
Seconded. May we vote? Now we come to the city council agenda. I would just indicate if there's anybody in the audience who came specifically for the agenda item dealing with the development impact fees, that item is going to be continued. We're not going to act on that item tonight. It is a public hearing item. Mr. D. Bortnowsky will instruct us that we need to open the public hearing, but if you're here to give testimony, you're welcome to do so, but there will be no other action on this item until two weeks from tonight, 7:00 p.m., these chambers. No, that's the workshop.
Okay.
The actual action of the council.
The public hearing would be May 6th, I believe.
Right. Okay, there is one revision to the agenda, and that will be consent, item number six S, which will come off the consent calendar and will be dealt with as a standalone item.
Mayor Caldwell, there is also an addendum, which is a closed session item.
Well, I don't have that. Well, that's the one I just said's coming off the consent calendar. And so what item will this be? This is a closed session item. Okay. So we do have an addendum to the closed session item on the city council, and it deals with the acquisition of real property and negotiations. I'll have Mr. D. Bortnowsky read that into the record. Mr. D. Bortnowsky?
Correct, Mayor Caldwell. We, I'd like to go in closed session with you. Presidential Government Code 54956.8 pertaining to real estate negotiations between Inland Energy, the city attorney's office, and it's for properties located immediately north of the North-South Runway. All the properties are listed by parcel number and property owner on the addendum agenda item. No need to add it because it was an addendum item, so it was properly noticed.
Okay. Any objections from members of the council? That's what it will be. We now go to the public hearings. Item three, A, B, C, and D, deal with the acceptance of the engineer's report for the formation of a street lighting assessment district for tracks number 17486, and the formation of that street lighting assessment district, and also for a track 16981. There's four resolutions. The four resolutions will be adopted with one motion, which will approve both engineers' reports and will order the formation of both street lighting assessment districts unless there's an objection from a member of the council. If not, I'll open the public hearing on items three, A, B, C, and D. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, with regard to the formation of the street lighting assessment district for tracks 17486 and 16981. Hearing no public testimony, I'll close the public hearing. Council, a motion for all four resolutions would be in order.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. May we vote? Item four is a public hearing, dealing with the 2008-2009 Annual Action Plan for our housing and community development programs and the projects that council adopted at the March 4th meeting. This is a public hearing for anyone who wishes to be heard for, against, pro, or con on the housing and community development program and project. Anyone who wishes to be heard, for or against, pro or con. I have one card from Judy Morris, wishing to address the council on this subject. Ms. Morris?
I'm not sure that I have much to say except thank you for the city's support for our organization, Moses House Ministries, through the years. And I would like to tell you some exciting news. We have been donated some property in Victorville, and it looks like we'll be able to expand our resource center and continue the growth that we, the exponential growth that we've experienced this last year. And once again, thank you. And I didn't know if you would have any questions in regards to this for me.
Just, that's good news.
Yes.
Very good news.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on agenda item four pertaining to the Housing and Community Development, sometimes known as the Block Grant Program? Hearing no other testimony, I'll close the public hearing and move in second to adopt the action plan. May we vote? Item five is the DIF fee item that I indicated earlier. Will be continued to the first regularly scheduled meeting in May, which I understand to be May 6, 7:00 p.m. these chambers. The night, or the morning before that, on Monday, May the 5th, there'll be a continuation of the workshop. Now, I guess that's on the 28th.
April 28th is the workshop.
April 28th will be a continuation of the workshop that was held yesterday morning, and that'll be 8:00 a.m. these chambers. Although it is a hearing, I'm required to open and invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the issue of DIF fees, for or against, pro or con. I see Mr. Norris in the audience, who was with us yesterday morning. Did you just come up for the evening? Nothing better to do?
Yeah, I sit up here.
You didn't trust us, did you? You're smart. Okay, we will go to the consent calendar. These items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion unless there's a request to remove an item. And there is a request to remove the last item, item S. Are there any other requests for removal? If not, then a motion would be in order for the consent calendars, items A through R, with S being removed from the consent calendar.
With approval?
Second.
Vote. No, A through R. S comes on.
Yes.
I just pulled it. S, as in Sam.
What happened to Fox, as in F?
It stays. May we vote? Okay, I'm going to set S aside for a minute. We will go to item seven, which is a request to adopt proposed resolution 08066, which if adopted, would authorize the application for California Integrated Waste Management Board Grants for April 08 through April 2013.
Second.
Vote. Item eight deals with claims against the city. Numbers 0803 by Cynthia Aceves Rivera and 0804 by Verizon. I move both of those claims to be denied. Refer staff for further processing. Normally, we would have gone to redevelopment agency. So I'll go to the redevelopment agency. There are no revisions. Item three is the consent calendar. Those items will be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
Second.
Item four is presentation by CMB regarding the federal EB5 Investor Visa Program. Mr. Roberts, do you have any preliminary remarks you want to make, or shall we go to Mr. Hueson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We became aware earlier this year that a firm by the name of CMB, which are the initials for Closed Military Bases, had applied to and received approval from the federal government designating George Air Force Base as a regional center under the federal EB5 Investor Visa Program. George Air Force Base was named, along with some other closed military bases in California, including San Norton and Mather in Sacramento. And that designation as a regional center makes us eligible for investment into our economic development activities at SCLA. And tonight, we'd like to welcome to the podium to make a presentation about SCLA and the benefits and a participation in EB5 by noted economist John Hueson. John?
Welcome to Victorville again. It's always a delight to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Before I comment on that, I would like to just take a moment and really congratulate the city on this. My son is currently serving in Iraq, and I know very much the strain on the families, and I know how much they really appreciate getting the recognition and support. So thank you very much for taking the time to do that. I wish all of us were doing it because we tend to sometimes forget what those young men and women and their families are doing. What I thought might be helpful to you is to explain the impact which this program can have on the community by making dollars available in bridge loans, which can stimulate other activities that without those bridge loans might not occur. Just a little tiny bit of economic theory to start out. If you think about your economy like a gold mining town in the Old West, what you had there was miners dig up gold and ship it away, and that supported the miners themselves. So they brought money to a place that otherwise wouldn't be there. They have things they need, and so you end up with a secondary set of activities supported by the same money. Specifically, you've got the general store, you have the saloon, that if you don't have that primary activity bringing money to the town, you don't get those secondary activities. Now, in the case of Victorville, there are a variety of activities that will be supported by funds that would come in through a bridge loan. One would be the rail spur to help get BNSF Intermodal put forward, which would have the effect of stimulating things such as various parts of the business sector, things like the shopping centers and that sort of activity. A second would be Victorville II Power Plant, which has been discussed a little earlier. Again, the bridge loans can help stimulate that. A third, a wastewater treatment plant, which is basic to certain types of businesses that like to locate in the city. A fourth would be the Phase One completion of warehousing and logistics at SCLA. Each one of these is like the gold mine. It brings the money to the community, which in turn can have the effect of stimulating other activity to the point where people may not even be aware that their job, what they're doing, is benefiting because it gets lost as the money changed hands within Victorville, within the Victor Valley, within the county. A $100 million bridge loan is essentially what the proposal is, to be used for each of those four projects in various amounts. of those four projects in various amounts ultimately to be determined by the city. What that does is provides financing until permanent loans are available. It can be repaid from permanent financing, or in the case of the power plant, it can be repaid from the cash flow as the revenues come through the power plant. It makes the projects possible that otherwise not, may not be able to move forward without that initial injection of funds to move the projects forward. All jobs ultimately created are, by these four projects, would be an indirect result of having those bridge loans that allows them to move forward in a timely manner. If we look at the BNSF Intermodal, essentially what the bridge loan would do there is help with the rail spur over to the site to make that take place. It would be part of the $100 million to finance the rail spur, and it makes possible $200 million in intermodal yard construction and the logistics facilities adjacent to it. It would be repaid out of the property tax increment at the site. If you take a look at what is the effect of that site being built, 735 jobs would be created directly working for the railroad there by 2011. By 2015, there would be over 2,600 jobs working directly by the, for the railroad. These are numbers coming from a study done by BNSF. In addition to that, the adjacent logistics operations which feed off of the railroad would create an additional 663 jobs by 2011 and 1,763 by 2015. In the economy, because of that secondary effect of jobs being created in the primary tier, the gold mine tier, as it were, there would be an additional 2,614 jobs created elsewhere in the economy by 2011 and almost, over 6,600, almost 6,700 by 2015. Altogether, this project by 2011 will create 4,012 jobs, adding them all together over 11,000, almost 11,100 by 2015. So this is an extraordinarily important piece of the puzzle. Every million dollars invested in these projects by 2011 will create 134 permanent jobs. Every million dollars of bridge loan would create 370 jobs by 2015. The second, the Victorville II Power Plant, which is a combination solar as well as natural gas-fired plant. This is a $700 million facility that the bridge loan would allow the financing of equipment to get it to move forward. This would be repaid out of the revenues from the operation of the plant. By 2011, if you look at wholesale rates as they currently exist, and they'll probably go up from this, but it, by 2011, the power plant operating not at capacity would create 195 million in revenue. It would have 391 million at its capacity, which would be reached between 2011 and 2015. In terms of jobs, the facility itself, 435 jobs, 870 by 2015. That would be the facility and its ancillary operations to support it. Affiliated jobs, 184 and 367. These induce elsewhere in the economy, 683 by 2011, 1,366 by 2015. So the power plant operation, total effect on the Victorville area economy, 1,302 jobs by 2011, and by 2015, operating at capacity, 2,603 jobs in the area as a consequence of its operations. Here, a million dollars from the bridge loan by 2011 is supporting 43 permanent jobs. Each $1 million in the bridge loan, 87 permanent jobs by 2015. If we look at the wastewater power plant, that would be, again, another part of the $100 million bridge loan. To be conservative in everything I've done, first of all, it would be repaid out of operational revenue as well as tax increment from any manufacturing facilities that locate nearby. What I have done here in the work I've done on this, on the loan, in terms of its justification with the federal government, to be very conservative was to say, let's say nothing happens other than the fact that that facility is available to allow firms to locate here. There is the possibility of a bottling plant, I understand, that could have been put into those calculations. Finally, the last piece of the puzzle is the completion of Phase 1 of SCLA's Warehousing and Logistics. Again, that would help finance a total of $47 million in street, uh, street construction, demolition, utility installation, which makes possible an additional $636.9 million in construction at the facility that needs to have that work done in advance. It would be repaid out of tax increment. If we look at the logistics operations, they would create 2,024 jobs by 2011, 3,036 by 2015. Affiliated jobs that work, of companies in the community that would work with the companies at the facility, 550 additional jobs by 2011, 825 by 2015. The induced elsewhere in the economy where you, again, that secondary effect that I talked about, the general stores and the saloons, in effect, another 1,650 by 2011, 2474 by 2015. So the total operation there would add 4,224 jobs by 2011, 6,335 by 2015. Every $1 million in the bridge loan there is supporting 211 permanent jobs by 2011 and by 2015, but 317. If you put all of these projects together that can be facilitated by the bridge loans, the $100 million in bridge loans creates $1,614 in construction work. I'm not in any of the jobs allowing anything for the jobs created in the short term for that, again, being very conservative. But the job creation at BNSF, 412 by 2011, 11,097 by 2015. The power plant, 1,302 and 2,603. The Sterling Phase 1 completion, 44224 and 6335. Altogether, these operations would create 9,538 jobs by 2011 and 20,300, 20,035 by the time we got to 2015. Each $1 million from the loan would create 95 permanent jobs by 2011. It would create 200 by 2015. Now, a critical piece of all of this, and something I think most people in the High Desert are, have been waiting a long time for, is the question. If you build the facilities, particularly the facilities at BNSF and the facilities at SCLA, the question is, will the carp companies come to the High Desert, which are currently mostly operating in the valleys? What this chart shows is research that I have done in the valleys, talking about buildout. At what point does the area from Fontana through Ukaipa build out? Because once that happens, the industry has not a lot of choice but to come here. And that has been the trend of when the real volume of these facilities begin to locate in a market like yours. If you look up there, you'll see various dates. 2009 Bloomington's gone. Colton is just, has been going very slowly. That'll speed up when the others begin to shut down. But the two most important up there are Redlands and San Bernardino, 2010 and 2011. That's where the real energy is down there. Rialto has just rezoned some property, and that by 2013. So by 2015, will all of this, except for the Colton, that area will be gone, and you will see the fact that these facilities are being built, generating the significant job creation shown here. As I say, they're going to have to come up here because the East San Bernardino area will be built out. Your competitor will be the area around Marcha Reserve Base, and the real battle for facilities will be between you and them going forward. So the infrastructure, what it will do if you build it, will speed up this process because without it, it can't move ahead, just as the construction of the Third Rail through Cajon Pass has been a critical piece of being able to move forward. I'm sure the negotiations with an organization like BNSF. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Comments from members of the council? Well, you probably know more about our community than just about anybody. You've studied it and studied it, and your reports have always been accurate and very helpful, and tonight is no exception. Thank you for helping us move down this path. As you know, this council's a 5-0 vote for pro-growth, pro-business, pro-development, and we're pursuing all of these projects and others with a primary goal for job creation. So your, your work product tonight and your presentation here is very, very helpful to us, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
I understand we have a representative of CMB, which will take up the second part of, of this concept.
Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, city attorney, city clerk, and city manager, thank you for affording CMB and myself the opportunity to discuss our John Hewson, Professor Hewson's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. I'll try to be brief, too, because I think he really hammered the essence of the program. The essence of the program is really a jobs, a jobs, a jobs bill. It's a jobs statute, and it's, the intent of the law of Congress is to increase regional productivity. And I think Professor Hewson did an excellent job in explaining what, what increasing regional productivity is. And this is, to me, this is almost a textbook example. I also want to pay some, a round of gratitudes to everybody. The mayor, who's really in the leadership of the city, seized the opportunity. This is an opportunity to provide some, some fairly low-cost capital to really, on a flexible term, to do what you want, to stimulate growth. And, and you're, you're sort of the letter laying out some of the proposals and various projects was a tremendous help to us. And then assisting Professor Hewson with his report, because like I said, at the end of the day, it's a jobs bill, a jobs law. And if we can't, if we can't demonstrate jobs by, by that these projects effectuated these jobs, then at the end of the day, the, you know, the client, the investors are not going to earn, they're not going to pass muster with the federal government, and the money's going to get tied up. So that's, that was critical, and Professor Hewson did an excellent job on the report. I also want to, I think, City Manager Roberts, who was very excellent as far as identifying some of the big issues that we had to face as far as, you know, possible sources of repayment, and a whole array of issues. And it was excellent because at the end of the day, our, our clients are, most of them are very sophisticated businessmen and women. Most of them are from the Pacific Rim, and they, they kick the tire pretty good on this program. They, they're putting a half a million dollars as the minimum investment. And to do that, they want to make sure that the money's going to be fairly secure. So that was, that's always been our guiding light, is, is security. So basically, CMB was founded in 1997, and it was, basically, CMB stands for California Military Base. Right around the same time, the BRAC Commission was big in the news. California got inordinately hard, as you all know. And Mr. Hogan, our founder, so wait a minute, he, he saw that there are three prominent areas, inland, inland empire, the High Desert, and then Sacramento County has three right in a very close proximity. The Army Depot in Sacramento, McLoughlin and Mather are four space up there. Marcha, four space, as Professor Hewson mentioned, Riverside, and then San Bernardino County, of course, George and Norton. He, Mr. Hogan toured this area back in 1996, you know, with most of the bases that were closed during the first round of BRAC, and really saw this area has tremendous potential. This was the very first CMB project, called the Mill Street Project. We're very proud of this today. It was also, it was a $650,000 unsecured loan to the, to the Inland Valley Development Agency, which is a reuse agency for Norton. They, they used that money to attend to one matching grant fund from the Department of Commerce, and they were able to build Mill Street. You could see all the developments. It was also bundled with a $2 million private stock investment to Poly Pacific, which is a Canadian manufacturing company that moved, that moved down there. And Professor Hewson actually did the original initial study and came up that he'd be, that would probably produce about 1,200 jobs. I think, he was probably a little conservative, that's only direct jobs up there, 1,200. There's probably several indirect in the, in the area. Mill Street and the other infrastructure at Norton continues to bear fruit. Here's, here's a Mill Street. It was back in 1997. It was a narrow two-lane Jeep trail going into the, to the, I believe that's the eastern side of the base, and that is, I'm sorry, the western side of the base, and they, it was expanding to divide it a highway. You can see the warehouse development going up alongside of it. That's a pretty recent picture. It's about a year old, maybe a year and a half old. I was actually standing in the middle of the street when I took that. Here's an aerial view. The Mill Street is coming in from the south. You can see Kohl's, Mattel, Stater Brothers. I'll talk more about Stater Brothers later. And, let's see, what else? And Pep Boys Auto, which was a significant employer in the area. I thought we, that's our BRAG picture now hiring, just like I said, the whole idea is new jobs. So back, basically what happened was the, the Immigration Service shut the program down in the, in the late 90s. CMB kind of was, went into sort of inactive status. It was unofficially, it was always considered an active regional center, but we, there was no activity as far as investments. Came back in business in 2007. Actually, we did a lot of groundwork before that, but had our meeting in late '06 with the Director of EB5 Program and said we wanted, we'd like to get a new letter under the new law, because the law did change in the interim as well. Incidentally, the reason why it's called CMB Export is because of the old law, you had to show, in addition to jobs, in addition to increased regional productivity, the government, federal government has infinite wisdom, it's, we'll let you go ahead and create, increase exports too while you're at it. You know, I mean, pull a rabbit out of your hat, you know, hit all three of those. But actually, interesting thing, interestingly enough, the SCLA is uniquely poised to actually increase exports because of the global distribution capacity of the, of the airport. So we got our new letter of authorization, which I can provide copies of to anybody who asks for it. There's, there's page one of the letter. You can see on top is George Air Force Base was part of the regional center area. CMB is unique, it's not one contiguous area, it's actually six base areas. What do our clients want? They want a permanent visa, obviously. They want to be able to come and get permanent residency here, ultimately US citizenship. They'll want, they also want to get a return on their investment, although that's probably low on the totem pole. And, or return of profit is a sort of misnomer. Actually, return is actually capital, what they should read, because the, the security is the most important. They want their, they want to be able to successful with their, with their immigration needs, but they also want to get their money back at the end of the, at the end of the term. Also, the other thing is safety investment, defiant exit strategy. That's why we'd like to make loans to government agencies because it's secure, and there's usually a sunset horizon time on the, on the loan. Usually it's about six years, which is a perfect bridge loan type length. Typically, we, we're looking at a three-year prepayment if they, if the agency so chooses. CMB began marketing, the new program, June of '07, quickly raised $5 million for the, back in Norton. It was, it was an IBDA project. There's also the seven million, second, Group B, Phase 2, was a $7 million road and bridge infrastructure project. This is example, you can see the, the top of the, it's the same picture, but this is the new, more recent. And Group A and Group B were really designed to accommodate the new Stater Brothers facility that was, had been being, finally, is, I think it's still being, still later phases are still going in there. They anticipate 2,500 new jobs by the end of, by the end of 2011. And you can see there's also a bridge over the, ascending on a river on the south part of the picture, and then an airport access road to provide additional access for Stater Brothers trucks. Obviously, this was all critical, although I, Stater Brothers would have chosen a different location. This is example of this huge facility as it was being constructed probably a year and a half ago. Here's executive offices. When I show this, you'll see the next picture, how the executive office building is really dwarfed by the warehouse. I think it's kind of interesting. Executive offices in the lower right-hand corner. I think that's really interesting. Norton was, we, in addition to qualify for the lower half a million dollar investment amount, has to be a targeted employment area, or 1.5 times the national average. That's the Norton area map, the qualified census tracts. And then here, we recently got George area qualified as a targeted employment area. And that's through the Governor's Department of Employment Development. Talk about Victorville. Some of this is sort of duplicative as to what Professor Hewson wanted, so I'll try to be brief. We liked, obviously, Victorville, it's obviously one of the fastest-growing communities in California. And we also mentioned the TEA. It's about 1.6 billion, if you, go through Professor Hewson's report, add up all the sources of capital, it's about 1.6 billion. Add the private Sterling, private capital on buildings, as well as all the public, public, federal, state, local funds that would go into the, into the area, development area. Here's, I mentioned the, the sort of the letter from the mayor when we first got into discussions. We met, again, this is Professor Hewson covered the four components. There's, obviously, some of you have probably seen this picture, it's really impressive. There's, obviously, some of you have probably seen this picture, it's really impressive, showing the yellow, the main line, and just, and there's actually like a, the movie is quite impressive, too, the sort of the computer-automated design of that. Again, more sterling. So, you show you the huge size of this sterling area. Hybrid power plant, this is a good time to pause and thank Buck Johns, because I think Mr. Johns of Inland Energy is one, I think, who thought it'd be a good idea to provide the intro, introduction to the CMB and the city, so I want to thank him, and it's kind of been, get a couple, coordinate different things. We agree, we put the slide in there, because actually, we do, some of these slides we use when we're marketing overseas, and we really believe what the mayor's saying here, that it seems like, what we've, you know, what we've read about the hybrid power plant does seem to make a lot of sense. West End wastewater treatment plant. Strengths of CMB, this is kind of, this is, again, this is more targeted for investments, but you can kind of understand. Again, well-defined, simple legs of strategy. You know, our investors are not coming in to buy a building somewhere, buying, buying, you know, a stock in a company for their investment. Their, you know, it's, the money's placed with a government agency, and there's fairly straightforward exit. So, again, especially, too, it's very attractive when you're selling overseas, now, so with the U.S. overall commercial real estate market, or residential real estate. It provides security for the investor. Some of this sort of touches upon similar themes. You know, it's very attractive, you have several sources of revenue, low risk, again. Proof of jobs, again, I think Professor Hewing really nailed that, nailed that point about this real strength, because you don't, the law requires 10 jobs per investor, it's a fairly low bar, but, yes, yes.
That one of the weaknesses in the first program that kind of failed and shut down, that they didn't do an accountability on the jobs creations, is that one of the biggest flies in the ointment?
There was a lot of problems, a lot of it, too, there were, you had, fortunately, as a lawyer, I don't like to blame lawyers, but a lot of immigration lawyers were serving as a business counsel and as immigration counsel, so it's conflict of interest. And what they, a lot of these lawyers were doing is they were skimming off, the investor was 500,000 supposedly, well, they were skimming off like 100,000 or 50,000 in management fees right off the top, and, or more, and, or they were providing sort of like loan schemes where maybe the investor didn't have to put all of it. But I also, I also think, too, that the law was relatively new then, and so that goes to your point, that I don't think the government really fully understands the whole idea of indirect jobs, having an economic impact analysis like we had tonight, to be able to go in and show that. So, I think, I think that the new law, the new law in 2003 really does sort of really talk about regional productivity, pooling of capital. And that's another point that people are saying, well, wait a minute, you're only putting up 100 million. How are you getting credit for another 1.5? Well, the reason they do that is because that's the whole idea, is that you want, you want to leverage that to bring capital, but, you know, let's increase the size of the pie, basically, or the pot, you know. So, I think that, so that all goes to your point, that, yeah, I think that the new law is so much better than the old law, but I believe it changed in '02 and '03, I believe. So, there were several problems, but that was probably one of them. Transparency, we, and all our investors can inspect our books and records any times, and obviously, we're dealing with a public entity and freedom of information, that is also available as well. Typically, we, our expenses are capped at 4%, so all of our operating expenses, return on investment, everything is capped at 4%. That's all we charge for day-to-day sunk costs, everything, that the client, it's upfront, this is what you're going to pay. So, it's really simple, and it's straightforward. Some of the other competitors around the country, they're much more convoluted in terms of their structure. Targeted employment area, we've been able to demonstrate, that is one of the nice things about choosing military bases, because when they, you know, obviously, right around the base, there's really not a lot of actual employment right on the base. Obviously, the surrounding communities are benefiting from that, that asset, but it really, really provides, a lot of our competitors gerrymander alleys and roads to try to get their investment to qualify as a high unemployment area, and a couple of times, they've been shot down because of that. You know, one of the, we market overseas, California's diverse and vibrant economy, that's a really good plus when we're marketing overseas. Escrow account, our clients put money in escrow, in other words, that we can't touch their money until they've been approved, and then once they've been approved with their first initial petition, then the money gets released to the government agency or whomever. Again, simplicity, I've talked a lot about that, you know, the, and that's it. There's a website for anybody who wants to check out, check out more information about CMB. So, I can entertain any questions you might have.
There, I assume the federal government does the screening on the people that want to invest, you know, I mean, it's a nice thing to walk in here with a check and hand it to your program, but do we, federal government investigate where those monies are coming from?
Yes.
From drug cartels from South America or something, investing in Victorville?
Yes, Councilman Rothschild, absolutely. There's actually a two-tiered, and they have to go through Homeland Security, USCIS first, they've got to show a really elaborate source of funds. You know, if you guys do decide to go forward, I guess we could show you the first application, it's going to be probably this thick. A lot of that's going to be backup diagrams from the projects, but a big, at least half of it's got to come from the investors, got to show where, go back to where a city sold the house, where did the money come from that house? They go back several, they want to show really clean sources of funds, then they, then, once they get approved for their petition, then their case gets sent up to the State Department, they have to go to their home consulate in their home country, where they get a full investigation on their background is done, health screening, you know, what's, are they fit to be really a citizen? They really, the goal is, do we want people just coming here and, you know, are they going to contribute in some meaningful way to the, to the society and the communities? And we believe that, again, we believe this has potential to really have, increase the people that want to come here and start businesses, and really contribute to the community as well, in other ways, other, but not just the million-dollar bridge loan, 100 million-dollar bridge loan, so.
Further questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one, Mr. Mayor, or maybe a couple. Who finds these investors? You go out and find them, or they find you?
Actually, both. The web is a big area. The USCIS, which is the federal bureau that manages and approves people, maintains a list, a list of active regional centers. Immigration lawyers around the country, there's probably about 1,000, 1,500 that actually have probably done one of these cases at one time or another. And then, and then also through, there's actually firms overseas that help people relocate to different countries, whether it's a student who wants to go to college somewhere, somebody wants to retire, or get, you know, or have access to vacation property somewhere, or there's firms all over the world, so we try to meet those. So, most of our marketing's been done in the UK, Korea, and we're expanding into China is kind of our goal, just because there's a lot of, there's a lot of wealth in China that seems to be wanting to move into the U.S.
Program is open to any country?
Any country, yeah, except unless they're on a list, I think, unless, you know, maybe an enemy country, I don't think they're going to, not going to get too far. And then the other nice thing, we maintain the right to reject any applicant for any reason. So, there's no, they're not going to get with a discrimination suit, it's clearly, if we smell her at, or we just don't like the way some, you know, we have a bad feeling about somebody, we can reject their subscription. And a lot of times, you know, if it's from a country we're hostilities with, we're not going to, we're not going to, because we know it's going to run into problems down the road to begin with, and we're just not going to put our marketing.
What's the minimum investment?
It's a $500,000 for what they call the targeted employment area, or $1 million elsewhere.
Let me understand the program, so I make sure I've got it right. These investors come to you, or you go to them, whichever the case may be, they agree to invest this $500,000, and then they come over to this country with a visa promise, and there's a number of jobs they have to produce?
Yes.
And the number is?
Only 10. Only, but it's actually, a lot of times, if you're, if you're trying to start a company with half a million dollars and hire 10 people, maybe it takes a little more, I mean, in other words, that's really the power of a regional center. You can, you can do a direct EB5 investment anywhere in the world, or anywhere in the United States, and open up a dry cleaners or whatever. That's really, the statute was sort of designed to encourage investments in these targeted areas. It sort of defines economic zones, to be able to leverage other sources of capital, like public funding or private capital.
And then they come over here with a guarantee of a visa, permanent visa?
Well, it's not necessarily a guarantee, but if they, my, if their, if their application is in order, they probably got a 50/50 or better chance of.
This, this includes their entire family?
Under, dependents under age 21, their spouse and dependents under age 21.
Dependents under age 21?
Yes.
So, anybody over 21 would have to do the process themselves, or wouldn't be able to come over?
Yes.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question, and I've heard about this program before, but individuals can apply to government for that visa to bring in money, right?
Yes.
How does that work with this individual?
In other, in other words, they would have to do what's called a direct investment, and they would have to show that they're, start a company themselves, and demonstrate that company, and they would have to show W-2 forms, which is very tough to do, which is, you know, they have to show that these are active, and they have to be U.S. workers, they can't be, they have to be documented, U.S. workers. And same with our, with our program, too, like, one of our competitors was, did a motel, Marriott Hotel reconversion somewhere, and the hotel workers' union protested, they said, wait a minute, you're going to use this program for U.S., create U.S., permanent U.S. jobs? And it's well-known in the hotel industry that many, many workers, at least for a time, are undocumented. So, that got, that got held up for several, I think it may be still undergoing scrutiny by the federal government for that.
The program makes it smoother for, for the investors? This program makes it smoother for them to?
Yes, the Regional Center Program is advantageous for two primary reasons. One is, their investment is more not, more a passive investment, but as a limited partner, if they, if they participate as a limited partner in the, in the company that we set up, we set up a separate, we would set up, we have set up a separate investment, limited partnership for Victorville, if you, if you decide to move forward with this. They would be invested in that, and they would have rights as limited partners, you know, that's why I mentioned the inspection of books and records. So, and they have to meet like once or twice a year, I can't remember exactly, I think it's twice a year, and vote on policy. So, that's, but it's very limited, it's very easy, we could set up web conferences, there's ways, there's easy ways where somebody doesn't have to actually sweat having to get up at 5:00 in the morning, you know, or 4:30 in the morning, and just open, go to McDonald's and open it up, and make sure that they're, all their workers are, you know. So, that's number one. Number two is, is the availing, what's called the indirect job proof. In other words, you heard Professor Hewing's report, that a lot of these jobs are indirect. In other words, they're, based on a sound economic theory, we can predict within a reasonable degree of certainty that if you invest X amount of money in a certain way, as defined on your, on your project description, they will yield these many jobs over X amount of years. And Professor did a nice job of sort of showing the timeline of how those jobs are going to increase. So, this, it's really, so for the investor, it's wonderful, because our goal is like, look, we don't want, we don't want to be close, we want to have, and the Professor Hewing report does that in, you know, in spades, I mean, we don't have to, our clients are going to have this really wonderful study to show that they're well over the minimum, required minimum. But it's 10 for the Regional Center Program or the Direct Investor Program.
Further questions or comments?
Did you, maybe I missed it, mention the timeline? How much time do they have to create these jobs?
Excellent, excellent question. There, generally what it is, is you file your, what's called your I-526 petition, it's sort of the first step in the, in the process. You know, you don't have any rights, you can't do anything, they prove that, and that's where they look at your source of funds, they also look at the economic reports, the business plans, they look at all the, you know, the specifics of the projects, and really, you know, the government reviewers really scrutinize, whether it's the rail spur or whatever, they're going to get down, and if they, if they get that, then that just, that entitles them to apply for what's called a conditional visa, two-year visa. It's like I said, from there, it goes in the State Department, Homeland Security, USCIS, and they also follow Patriot Act rules on some of the money. Once you pass that I-526 petition, the first step, your case gets, you don't get anything at that point, it earns you the right to apply for your visa with the State Department, most likely at your home, at the U.S. Embassy or consulate in your home country. So, your file gets passed over to the State Department, so you're dealing with two different government agencies, maybe more, depending, maybe control of the currency, or currency control, or whatever. So, from that point, you, if you get that, if you're able to persuade the council or officers of the State Department in your home country, you deserve a visa, they'll give you this, it's good for two years, and at that point, you file after two years or 20 months, they give you a window, like a four-month window. You file what's called the 829 petition, which you're showing, okay, I invested the money, as I said, here's all the wire transfers, here's all the, here's the, there's loan documentation, financial transaction records for the whole, from the beginning to the end, showing the money going into the, being, you know, for example, we just, we just had a bunch of approvals in our Group B for Norton, for IBDA, and we were showing the money being wired out of the partnership, it got wired to the IBDA, so they can use it to build a bridge, and, you know, so all that has to be done with pictures, we'll provide pictures of the actual projects, the government reviewer can look at, say, yeah, this is a real project, you really did do what you said you were going to do, and, and they'll, at that point, if you pay, if you clear that hurdle, you are now a permanent resident in the United, you know, but, but, so typically, they want to see at least substantial proof of jobs after two years, but they realize for infrastructure projects that, because not every project is infrastructure, you have this Marriott Hotel project, they're going to want to see that, you know, they've hired the people, the bellhops and the, but for something like this, they're going to give us a little leeway, we've already, we've talked, and that was, we saw that in the Norton project, that some of the jobs are created at the two-year mark, but not all of them.
But in the meantime, they have their visa.
If they're able to clear the 829, exactly. But, but, it's very difficult, you get this very high likelihood those jobs will be, if not all the jobs are going to be created by the, by the two-year, then, then they're not going to get it. But we feel, that's the other thing, like, try to, you know, Professor's report has so many that, you know, the tenants, if we do 100, $100 million bridge loan, that's 200 investors, that's only 2,000 jobs for huge infrastructure-related projects, so we feel that that's pretty, pretty attainable within a 24-month period.
Further questions or comments from members of the council?
The comment I have, Mr. Mayor, is, I didn't see in your presentation here, maybe you have that documentation, that individuals who have come over from other countries and started businesses, and what businesses they've started, the fund, what their businesses have done, have they grown, where have they gone?
Well, sure, as far as like the direct EB5 program, or just, are those people who just move here to?
Programs you're dealing with.
You know, a lot of it's just anecdotal, just talking, attending the, there's actually an EB5 Subcommittee, the American Immigration Lawyers Association, so I've attended many of those, and there's actually a national convention every year in June, and I've attended that as well, Mr. Hogan. So, a lot of it's just anecdotal, and from actually speaking with Maury Burey, who's the head of the program, he spoke at the, at the EB5 Subcommittee at the National Convention last year, talked about several examples. I could, you know, I suppose if I asked Mr. Burey for that, he might know some of these people. One lady was from Seoul, Korea, it's a really interesting lady, she, this was the example Mr. Burey used at the convention last summer in Orlando, where she was like cleaned offices, and, you know, and she worked like two, like, you know, 15, 16-hour workdays every day, and was able to make some, made some wise real estate, you know, bought some, and she, apparently, this investment she had made with another family member took off, and she's able to use that money for her EB5 investment, and she ended up coming here, I think, becoming a Realtor or something, in, I don't know where in the U.S., what state it was, but, so, anecdotal, I can't, I can't provide you anything on that, it's just, you know, obviously, we, Congress is constantly reviewing this program, it's stories like that, or, you know, what they, you know, what they bring up when they're going for their reauthorization.
Further questions or comments from members of the council? I would indicate to the council that Mr. Roberts journeyed to Washington and met with Maury Burey, the federal official that administers this program, and came back with very positive comments. I have seen letters with my own eyes as of tonight, letters of support from Congressman McKeon, Congressman Lewis, Senator runner, and Assemblyman runner attesting to the worth of this program. We've seen close by the positive effects of this at our competitor, a former Norton Air Force Base in San Bernardino. The issue for the council tonight is whether or not they first wish to embrace this program, and if they do, if they're prepared to authorize city officials to travel to China to tell John Hewing's story about what's happening in our community and the opportunity to invest. So, those are the twin issues before the council. Mr. Roberts, do you have anything further to add?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add that I did travel to Washington to meet with the federal official in charge of the program, Mr. Maury Burey. Included in that meeting with me was our Washington legal representation from the firm of Venable, which was Mr. Dick Powers. We spent nearly three hours with Mr. Maury Burey doing due diligence regarding the program, asking the kinds of questions that were asked tonight, what kind of background checks are done on the individuals that are making the investment, what kind of checks are done on the sources of the funds that are being made, and we received confirmation from the same information that we received tonight from Mr. Hurley, that there are very extensive background checks done by the federal government on those issues. We also, I am pleased to say, received a very good report back on Mr. Hurley and his firm, CMB, and the work that they have done, and it is very reputable, and the representation[1762.86] firm, CMB, and the work that they have done, and it is very reputable, and the representation from Mr. Burey is that we can be comfortable that this program will be professionally managed and administered by CMB.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Not a motion would be in order?
Well, Mr. Mayor, then I, I just have a couple of comments then. I think the program sounds like a good program, I honestly do. I think with all the letters we've received, it is surprising to me though, that I don't have anything in my documentation to show me that companies that have, individuals that have come over from the other countries and are successful in this program. You're telling me it's a good program, but what proof or what documentation do I have that it's been successful, where? I don't have anything here that tells me, Mr. Smith came over from China and started this program with 10 employees and now has grown to 100, and, but I don't have that.
The new iteration is only...
Did it happen? Has it worked? Well, if it's only a couple of years old, then it worked. I want to know it's worked. I want to know what's worked for somebody else, all right? If it's worked down the hill, then who's it worked for and how's it worked? You know, I've got great letters here of people that say it's, it's a great program, but I don't have any documentation to show me how it's worked.
Hurley, cared to respond?
Yes, all we, like, all we can discuss is our limited example, there's a lot of other regional centers with greater, um, sort of institutional history. Like I said, we, when, when Mr. Hogan saw the problems and the fraud going out in the late 90s, he said, look, this, I'm going to keep, put this aside, kept, kept the company active, but didn't do anything as far as investment. It was only until, uh, hearing of all the successes throughout the country, there's about, there's about 15 of these regional centers in the United States. Again, these are, these are not, these are, these are, um, each project of a regional center is a little bit different, and they're going to vest typically, you know, tens or hundreds of millions of dollars into various projects, whether it's, uh, for example, Philadelphia, the Philadelphia Industrial Development Council did a, uh, a hundred million dollar naval yard rehabilitation project. I have no idea, I could probably get that statistic, how many jobs that created.
Do I recall in, in the package that you presented to us previously, um, something, somewhere in the neighborhood last year of 750 visas were issued?
Uh, I thought it was more than that. I know this year was pretty do a billion, billion dollars worth...
A billion dollars?
For those, uh, than a billion dollars total throughout the United States. Again, that's just direct investment, not to mention all the other indirect monies that would be, that would be, you know, catalyzed as a result of that, that investment.
Well, I guess what you're saying to me then, this has been a success in other locations.
Absolutely, yeah, I can, I can run them down, tell you...
But I don't see that, and that would have been a nice presentation, say, even if it's not your program.
Right, right.
This program has worked in other locations, and this is how it's worked. This is what's happened to these individuals that have come over here, started these businesses, given us a bridge loans or whatever the case may be, and they've grown their businesses, been successful in how it's worked. That, that's the kind of nuts and bolts I like to see.
Sure.
You know, I, I can look at these letters all day long, and it's wonderful, I, I think they're important coming from all our elected officials, but I want to make sure the program is working somewhere.
Right, right, and all I can do is speak from our experience, whether it was the Mill Street project that was able to generate out of the $650,000 loan, a $7.2 million total project cost for the Mill Street expansion, and then, and then, um, which was, which was bundled with a $2 million private preferred stock investment, our clients that in the late 90s invested in a company called Poly Pacific. Mr. Hogan then went up to, uh, worked with, uh, I believe it was Gray Davis's, uh, department in the California Department of Trade and Commerce, and they're, they actually know what the president of Poly Pacific went up to, not sure where they were, Calgary or wherever they were, they ended up moving a plant down to, um, down into the inland valley. So right there, that was, I can't, I don't know the exact number of jobs, but it was 2 million, it had to be at least 40 jobs, because it's for investors, and I'm sure they exceeded that, uh, I think they had 80, 80 jobs at that, at that firm. Um, the, the, um, all I can also, speaking for me, I, I joined CMB the end of 2005, spent about a year gearing up, and then we had a meeting with Mr. Burey at the end of '06, so it took us about a year to kind of get this, a lot of groundwork goes into, you know, getting ready to take that, actually go to Washington to meet with, so, and so all I can do is speak from my experience in the, in the last, uh, two and a half years. And, uh, so we did, Project One was $5 million, or 10 investors, they all got approved, they all got their, all of them are now in line for their visas. That was a $5 million loan to the IBDA for, uh, parking facility near the airport in a, in a semi-trailer staging area. Again, that's not a regular, that, that's a public facility, that's not a regular private company, but under the regional center program, you don't have to start a private company. Some regional, some of our competitors choose to do that, like the Marriott Hotel project, um, the, the, um, there's some real estate in Washington, D.C., there's some real estate rehabilitation, same in Seattle, the South, so there's, there's, oh, there's tremendous, and I think GAO or somebody does a report of total visas every year, but I know, I thought I heard this year was going to be a bill, they anticipate a billion dollars. So that'd be, that'd be, um, that'd be 200, 200 investors. Okay, my math's not very good, I can't, more than that.
Well, that's, those are my comments. Mr. Mayor, what was your suggestion? I'm sorry, you were starting...
I didn't make a suggestion, I indicated that the options for the city tonight is, number one, a decision of whether or not to embrace this program on behalf of the City of Victorville, and if the answer to that is yes, then to authorize representatives of the city to go to China to present the, uh, John Husing report and participate in the, the marketing of the City of Victorville Southern California Logistics Airport, Foxborough project area.
Are you going to take those separately?
Pardon?
Take those separately?
However, I, I'm just framing the issue.
Yeah, I would...
However, the council wants to...
How many of our officials will be traveling?
That's why I want to take them...
And how long will they be gone? How much are we going to spend on this? Things that, right now, things are so tight, and here we are, I'm not saying we're taking a chance, please understand, um, I'm just thinking about the people when they read this newspaper.
Well, let's take one at a time, let's take the first part, do we embrace the program, if we can do that, and if we embrace the program, should we go forward with, with the concept of the program, and I guess it's up to staff or the council to determine who we go with or what we do.
Well, is that a motion to embrace the program?
That would be a motion.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to embrace this program?
First, there you go. And then the second issue, um, I think we just, we need, obviously looking at the big picture, when we're talking billions of dollars, the cost to go to China, I don't know what it would be, I don't know who's going to go, I assume it's going to be the mayor and a staff member, um, I got to imagine that's going to cost us $25,000, $30,000 to go to China, because I assume it's probably a pretty lengthy trip, or a week trip, or whatever. You may even know that better than I do.
Councilman Hunter, there are two opportunities that I am aware of. There is a, uh, presentation of numerous potential investors, uh, throughout the Pacific Rim that have been put together by CMB over a period of about a week.
Pardon me?
And then there is another, uh, trip regarding the EB5 program that is being scheduled by the U.S. Department of Commerce, um, and so I don't know the length of that trip. Uh, the trip that has been identified by CMB is, is about a nine-day trip, and I suspect that Mr. Hunter's estimate of the cost for two individuals is very close.
Well, I think the important part is, we need to make a public decision in the, in the tough times of our economy right now, with the tough times of our budget, uh, that we're going to have to address here in the next month or two months. And it's not that I don't think we should do it, because I think we have to do it if we're going to go after the business, but we got to be ready to take the hit, that if we're going to, to cut programs or, or whatever the case may be in our budget, we've got to be able to justify this, that there's going to be a major return on our investment to do this.
Further questions or comments?
Uh, just one, one point, and, you know, we, we always have this difficulty of differentiating between economic development redevelopment funds and city funds, and this kind of an effort, as with all of our economic development efforts, would not come out of city money. This is not money that's available to the city, it's redevelopment money. And then there also is the potential that the program, if it is successful in acquiring funds, the cost of travel could be reimbursed out of the cost of the program. So there's no way that the trip would have a, an impact upon the general fund and the programs that we were talking about cutting, but that is a very difficult distinction to make in the public arena.
Constituist, yeah.
Well, I, I think you're correct, you know, but we're looking at our situation, not only our situation, the situations statewide and nationwide, we're in a recession, we need to look for ways to bring investment in, and so, to me, that's, that's what I would, I would consider, you know, a thing that would be a worthwhile effort. Besides that, as I mentioned, I heard about this program before, and I heard about it from the Koreans, because they're using it to, primarily probably to get their visas, but they're bringing their $500 or $1 million with them when they come over, so, and that's what we want, we want the money, and they can have their visas, you know, it's just a trade-off point.
And I'm glad Mr. Roberts brought up the difference between the funding, because I think it is important to know that if the funds that'll be used for this are not coming out of general fund, and I, I want to make that perfectly clear, that, and possibly getting refunded on what we do, so. I have no problem with it, I just want to make sure that the public knows why we're doing this.
Well, you know, rare anymore that this council makes any kind of a decision that doesn't have its distractors. The difference, whether you talk about paving a street or building a park or whatever it may be, there are people who criticize or not be supportive, and that's fair, I mean, that's what give and take of discussions and public meetings like this is all about, and let the public know and let the public respond, but ultimately, ultimately, it is our responsibility to make decisions based upon our considered judgment of what is in the best interest of this community. I happen to believe that job creation is extraordinarily important to the long-term financial health, not just of the City of Victorville, but to Victor Valley. I am cognizant that we'll probably get beat up pretty bad by those not to be pro-growth, there are people who stop growth. That's not the philosophy, never has been the philosophy of this council. I think to pass on an opportunity to generate new investment dollars to support the programs that were identified in, in Dr. Husing's report would be a tragedy for the long-term health of the community. Agree with me, but I think it's a good program, I think the return on investment, E, to be pretty potential, Councilman Rothschild is the resident mathematician, spent $30,000 and generated $100 million worth of investment and roughly 20,000 jobs, what's the, what's the order of magnitude of return on investment, Mr. Rothschild?
Peter's not as passive as you...
You can ask anybody in this room, I mean, it's, this investment is incredibly sound and wise, you know, the hallmark of this city has always been that we've gone out there and looked for those areas and niches where it's safe for city councils to sit back and do basically nothing, say no, play it safe, don't make any waves, but if you do that, you don't break out of the envelope, you don't protect yourself unfortunately from the state of California, and you certainly don't go out there and create those industrial jobs. Retail is one thing, it follows itself, but the industrial developments that we're doing at SCLA are incredible, uh, and the things that we've done, this council has done over the last 10 years have been out of the unusual, uh, including our municipal utility and those type of things. So this investment here is, is miniscule, the payback is immense, and I guarantee you that the Victor Valley, the high desert region, is going to break out of the, what you might see as the economic slump of California and the nation, uh, much sooner than anybody else is because of the things that we're doing now and the investment that they're making right now. I feel very comfortable in that.
Somebody want to hazard a motion for the second part of the issue?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to fund the trip outlined, may we vote?
Anything to vote on?
Well, we got to get a mover and a second.
I can't vote on it.
Probably have to do this one as a voice vote, because we've already taken an action once on this item.
All right, for the record, who made the motion?
I did.
Hunter, who made the second?
I did.
We got two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, unanimous. That concludes the redevelopment agency, and I want to compliment Mr. Hurley and Mr. Dr. Husing for coming to Victorville, for spending the time, for having an interest in our community, and for helping us pursue job growth, uh, we're appreciative. As to the city council and the RDA, and I believe maybe even the airport authority, there are closed-session items. They'll go to the consent item that was removed in just a moment, but I just want to let everybody know, in case people want to start heading for the exits, that we will go into closed session on all of the reasons that are set forth in your agendas. It is not anticipated that when we come out of closed session, that there will be any action to report, although I cannot guarantee that. If you want to hang around and just check and see, I mean, if you're like Mr. Norris, who has nothing better to do and wants to sit here, you're welcome, and we'd be delighted to have you here, but we want you to know that if we come out of closed session and the chambers are empty, we will not be offended.
But we know we... I, I didn't say that.
Want to say something? Did you fill out a white card?
I did.
I apologize for going out of order, thank you for allowing me. Um, my name's Greg Norris, I'm with Horizon Communities, and tonight was overwhelming. It was, uh, thank you to Doris Davies, thank you to the City of Victorville for reminding me and everybody here what's important, and sometimes we get caught up in the day-to-day business, and if I can, I'd like to humbly support Sunset Ridge Park and the, uh, remember, the salutations of our troops here, I'd like to personally donate $1,500 to each cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Okay, the only remaining item is city council consent item number S, so we will go to that. Uh, I will indicate, first I want to apologize to Goldman Sachs, representative that is here. Uh, this item was pulled from the consent calendar at my request. You're kind of going to be the victim of some failure to communicate. We have a fairly consistent policy, although it doesn't always get implemented, that we are to receive the documents upon which we are to act Thursday preceding a council meeting. Now, not everybody adheres to that, we all have a tendency sometimes to get, uh, busy behind the power curve or whatever, but that is the policy of the Victorville City Council. At 4:26 yesterday, a revision to the Goldman Sachs agreement was faxed to the city. I received my copy about 10 o'clock this morning. I took the time to read it, but I did not have any time to compare it to the previous iterations. I wrote a series of questions that I anticipated would be answered before we started this council meeting tonight. I have not received any answers. Askeded to Barnett that this item be continued to the next regularly council, uh, council meeting, so that these items could be discussed and fleshed out, and Mr. Barnett was insistent that the matter had to go forward tonight, so that's the reason it's pulled. I am going to tell you my questions. Barnett assures me that he, or you, or Jeff Kinsel, or Ed Sledge, or Buck Johns, or all of the above, will be able to answer these questions, but had this been handled logistically proper, we wouldn't have to go through what I consider to be a somewhat unfair proposition for you. I'll read the questions, I don't care who in the group chooses to respond to them. I have a little stamp, and when I stamp this, I route it to people, and this was routed to the city manager, to inland engineering, to Jeff Kinsel, Dick Powers, and it was supposed to also go to Andre D. Bordanowski, but somehow his name didn't get stamped, so, uh, he's only partially off the hook, because this was faxed to me at 4:26 last night from his office, and he knows better. But here's the questions. Is this a standard agreement for this type of an investment project? Are the fee structures that are laid out in this agreement fair, appropriate, and standard in the industry? Is this the best deal that we can get for the redevelopment agency and the City of Victorville? Is Goldman Sachs committed to doing everything in its power to raise not less than $850 million for this project? What are the current thoughts on the equity financing issues and the mezzanine financing issues? There is an 18th month, 18-month exclusive period for Goldman Sachs, but there's no commitment by Goldman Sachs. If you go to page four, the full... If you go to page four, the full, first paragraph, I read that as no commitment. So, having had difficulties in the past with exclusive arrangements, and you know well what I'm talking about, Mr. Barnett, I'm troubled about that. We've been locked out of negotiations with others before to, in my opinion, this city's detriment. I need some assurance that we're getting what we're bargaining for. And the third, from the bottom sentence in that second paragraph on page four, says our firm, I'm meaning Goldman Sachs, to receive indemnification. I have no clue what the scope or breadth of the indemnification is, and I need to know that before I'm gonna embrace it. If you go down in the, on page four, in the last full paragraph, about halfway down, it talks about these agreements after termination surviving for a period of one year. I need some explanation as to why, and what the value is for the city. You go over to page six, the paragraph right in the middle, it says, "The city agrees that it will not claim that Goldman Sachs has rendered advisory services of any nature or respect, or owes a fiduciary or similarly duty to the city in connection with such transaction or the process leading thereto." I've never been through one of these, so perhaps that's appropriate, but I would tell you, when I considered the amount of money that the city is going to pay, and the reliance on the stature of one of the world's most reputable lenders on Wall Street, I'm curious why that kind of language is in there. So, I would like to have been able to discuss this informally, but, Mr. Barnett, you said it had to go, so it's your nickel.
All right. First, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for giving us this opportunity. I want to start by identifying myself, Tom Barnett, Vice President of Inland Energy. As you know, Inland's been retained as the manager of the development effort for Victorville Two. I want to also apologize for the delay in getting this to the council, but I want to emphasize that we have been in discussions with you and the full council for some many months now, discussing the overall timeline for this project. And I believe you all are very aware that the timetable is an aggressive one, it needs to be aggressive, for reasons that we have already taken before the council and approved, most specifically the general electric contract. It is a schedule that we all believe is doable. However, it is a schedule that does not allow for what I will call administrative delays. And in that sense, we have moved as quickly as I believe is humanly possible to make the selection of the preferred financing house, Goldman Sachs, and we have endeavored with a full-court press effort to negotiate the engagement letter in the fastest possible time to a point which we felt it was something that the council could review and sink your teeth into. And so, it really wasn't possible to get it to you earlier than this, but as I indicated to you, I do not believe this effort can delay until your council meeting in May to be able to go forward with an agreement with the selected financial house. So, I ask your indulgence to try and make this go forward as quickly as possible. As I've previously indicated to you, I believe that we are fully prepared to discuss your questions right now. You have all of your experts here. If we cannot answer those questions to your satisfaction, then I fully understand, and so does the rest of the team, that we should delay this effort. But I believe that we will be able to answer that. If you'll also let me make one other set of remarks. This process that we have gone through, which tonight is the culmination of it, to select a financial advisor for Victorville, for the Victorville Two project, has been an extensive one, one of the most interesting and comprehensive that I've ever been involved in. We have gone to what I consider to be the four premier financial houses in the world when it comes to the financing of power plants. And we have conducted an extensive RFP process, a proposal and interview process, with Barclays Bank, Deutsche Bank, Morgan Stanley, and Goldman Sachs. And we have formed a team of experts, all of whom, the core of whom are represented here tonight. We have Jeff Kinsel, whom you're aware of, the principal of KND. We have Ed Sledge, who's one of the most experienced energy lawyers from Hogan &amp; Hartson, has been actively involved in this. And we also have your city financial advisor, John Sullivan, and myself. Together, we have many, many years of experience in doing this kind of thing. We all sat down to evaluate the proposals, it was a very comprehensive and extensive process, and very close. And however, in the end, we all agreed that Goldman Sachs should be the winner. And then, the, based on that recommendation, the next step was to see if we could achieve an engagement letter that was fair, that was standard within the industry, addressed Victorville's needs, and would enable this critical process to begin going forward. And I think it's important that all of you understand that the financing that we are asking to be put in place by Goldman Sachs is a somewhat unusual one. We do not have power purchase agreements at this point in time for this project, which are, of course, the financial underpinning of any kind of financing. Yet Goldman Sachs has told us that they have devised a financial structure that they believe can accommodate that approach, and it will be complicated. It will involve a lot of work on Goldman Sachs' part, it will involve a lot of risk on their part to put together these components in the short timeframe that we're looking at, but their proposal, the basis on which we selected them, indicated that they could do it. We believe that they could do it in a better manner than any of the other candidates, and they can do it to meet our timeline, which would be to enable this money to be in place this summer, so the construction of this important project could commence then, and that would tie in with the timelines that are in our general electric contract.
Well, Mr. Barnett, don't, don't, don't misinterpret my comments. I selected, I participated in the selection of Goldman Sachs. I went to New York and visited with the four houses, plus JP Morgan, which you didn't mention. I participated in the interview process, and the rating, and the grading process, and in fact, supported the selection of Goldman Sachs. That has nothing to do with my comments, and that's why I say it's very unfair to the representative of Goldman Sachs. My criticism is more internal.
No, I understand that, Mayor, and I simply wanted to give a little bit of context for everyone here tonight to understand how we achieved, arrived at this point. And I think that the minute that we did make that selection of Goldman Sachs, our team set about putting the, negotiating an engagement letter. That negotiation was intense, it was a lot of back and forth. I think Goldman Sachs changed a lot of things at our request, and I have to commend Goldman Sachs for accomplishing something that, in my experience, ordinarily takes weeks, in a matter of days, to be able to turn around all of our comments. The principal negotiation was between Ed Sledge of Hogan &amp; Hartson and the attorneys for Goldman Sachs, but all of our team participated in making sure that the major points were addressed. And I believe that this document does address those, in my opinion, in my experience, the 30 years in the business, doing this kind of thing, this document does reflect what I think is a fair proposition for bringing on a financial house to do this kind of thing. However, your specific questions are very much to the point, and I'd like to have Jeff Kinsel come up and address those questions, and we will all be able to participate in augmenting his responses if need be. And then, I would like to give the representative from Goldman Sachs, who is here tonight, an opportunity to address the council as well. So, let me turn it over to Jeff to begin with.
Jeff, did you get my questions this morning?
Yeah, I've, I got them this afternoon, yes, I did.
Here are the questions, just a...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff Kinsel. Just to preface answers to your very specific questions, I will, I will say that, that the terms you use here of a standard agreement, I can't describe this as a standard agreement. In my 30 years of doing business, I've never been in a situation where, as you remember, we had, in the interviews, we had members from their tax-exempt bond desk, we had their equity guys, we had their commodities guys, we had their corporate finance guys, and we have to mesh all of those, all of those departments. And, and we will have a situation where their commodities guys will be acting as a principal for their own account. At the same time, we'll have their investment banking operation utilizing their, this commodities group acting as a principal to leverage up the financing. So, to suggest to you that this is a standard contract is really not fair, but this type of agreement is, lays out a framework for you to agree to agree at a later time. I believe, I, we went through the, we went through the costs, they're very fair, they made adjustments to all the costs, I think the termination fees are fair. They're right in line with market activities. The, I won't, I won't, I'll let Ed or someone else talk about indemnity, that's sort of the legal, the legal end of things, the indemnifications that they asked for. When they, when they talk about, in there, I think you reference the, the financial, fiduciary responsibility, or the financial advice, it's a little difficult, in my opinion, for them to, to be in a position to tell you that they are acting absolutely as a fiduciary, because in some measure, they're acting as a principal, and they don't want to, they don't want to cross those lines, and I think in all fairness, they've done a really good job of describing that. I think it is up to us as a team to make sure that we keep boundaries around those various activities. I can tell you that, that they are the biggest, the fast, and I guess I'm not gonna tell you that, they're the biggest, the fastest, and the best in the business. And based on what they've been willing to do with their fees, with their commitment, with the resources that they are promising, and because some of those resources have to come together in such a coordinated fashion, I think the document is a very fair one, and I would, I would recommend you move ahead on it.
Well, you've been with us for a long time, you've done a lot of work, very good work for the city of Victorville. So, I just want to make sure that I understand your position. You're, you don't have any problem recommending to the city council that we adopt this agreement?
I do not, I do not. I, I, it is a, it is a difficult task to bring all of the various resources that would have to be brought to bear to get this entire project done, and it's very difficult to describe it in a, in a, in a document that's eight or nine pages long, but I think what Tom and Ed and the Goldman Sachs lawyers have done, have drafted a document that we can live with, and we can move forward with, and I would recommend that we do that.
How many weeks do you think this has been in process?
This document? Two and a half, three?
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but to try and assimilate everything that's in here, compare it to the previous iterations in about six hours, is not easy. I make a living reading documents.
Barnett, what is, Mr. Barnett?
Sure.
What is the urgency that it can't hold over for another meeting?
Well, if you're saying that a decision can be made in another week, and you'd feel more comfortable doing that, I believe that could be done. My concern was having this slide to the, to the council meeting in May, which I do believe would cause us to encounter delays that the project really can't afford at this point. But I guess, Councilman Hunter, more to the point is, I mean, we, you know, we feel very strongly the burden that I believe you've placed on us to be your experts in doing this. You've retained us because of our expertise, we have assembled a team of experts that I consider to be second to none in the business, and we have spent a lot of time on your behalf working on this, and I believe that, you know, we have made the recommendation to you that it be approved. I clearly understand the final decision is yours, and if you feel like you would like, you would be more comfortable waiting a week, but I, I want to urge you to understand that we, we will begin, you know, working with Goldman, and I think they're prepared to do that at risk immediately, but it's not really fair, as you can appreciate, to do that for very long. I think the, I think one of the points here that Jeff sort of alluded to is that the, to me, your most important question really dealt with the 18-month exclusivity, and the fact that Goldman did not seem to be really committing to anything substantive in return, and I think, we can let Mr. Roemer talk about that from Goldman in a moment, but what you have to realize is that Goldman Sachs doesn't get paid anything unless this project is successful. So, they're not like typical consultants who you're now going to hire, has some kind of exclusivity, and you're gonna be paying them money. They're going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and ultimately millions of dollars, before they actually get any money back. And that money only comes back to them when this project is successfully financed. They are perfectly incentivized with all of us to make this project go forward and be a success, and if it's not, they don't get anything. And so, that is the way this business works. When you bring on a financial house, they are your partner, they're your guy, they're going to make this happen, that's their commitment. They're gonna make this happen, or they don't get anything. And in many ways, I think that's one of the best commitments you can get in this kind of business. And as we've all acknowledged, there's no one any better in the business than Goldman Sachs at this, and I really feel like, in my experience in working previously with Goldman and with many other financial houses, this is the kind of commitment, because it's impossible for them at this stage of the game to commit to you that they're gonna raise $850 million to begin with. We don't even know if it's 850, and there isn't any way they can say they'll raise that until they know more as we go forward. But believe me, they are totally incentivized to do this. And I think the, we've had discussions with them in the course of developing this agreement about equity and mezzanine financing, and Goldman's position is that they understand we want to minimize the outside equity, and to do that may mean bringing on mezzanine financing. I believe we've obtained a full commitment from Goldman that they will do that. If it can be done, they will do it. And so, we really aren't in a position to get anything better at this point in time, but we have already begun the detailed process. I spent half the day yesterday on a long conference call, going through line by line our pro forma, with probably eight Goldman people on the line. And so, you know, they are already invested in doing this, we are rapidly trying to come to the point where we can answer all of these questions. So, again, I second the recommendation of our team that you go forward with this, but we certainly understand it's your prerogative to want to take some more time.
And I appreciate that, Tom, and I understand you guys are the best, we agree there. We've got the, the best team in the house, but the bottom line is, the people on this side have to protect the citizens that are in our community. And one of my, one of my heartburns right now is, this whole process, this whole program seems to come down to, something has to be done right now. The last thing was the $175 million we had to do to make the purchase, had to be done right now, we ended up coming back in open session because I wanted to make some comments. Again, here we are again, this has to be done right now, and there's a new document on the table, and this is one of my biggest heartburns, is doing this, that I can't read it, I haven't, can't even associate with my, my legal... I haven't came and associated with my, my legal counsel to say, is this right? I have to take someone's word on it. Not that I don't take your word, but again, it's on the dais again, and I didn't have six hours. I had 25 minutes and didn't even get a chance to read it or see it.
Understood.
But Mr. Sledge, should I comment on some of these issues?
Yeah, I would ask Ed to come up. You want to say anything about the indemnification issues that the mayor's raised?
I want to address three of your points, just to make it crystal clear as to what you're signing and what you're not signing. Number one, with respect to a financial commitment by Goldman Sachs, like a bank gives you a loan commitment, clearly they're not making a financial commitment. They can't make a financial commitment because they haven't done the due diligence yet. And so we have an agreement with them to enter into a period where they will be getting to the point of making a financial commitment. So we should not, I just want to make sure that you, as the client, understands what we're signing and not signing. The second thing is, is there are two distinct roles in this transaction. One is your financial advisor, who has a fiduciary duty to you. And he will oversee Goldman Sachs. Goldman Sachs will be an underwriter or placement agent, which will be, in a certain sense, although they're working for you, at the end of the day, they enter into a contract with you and they're a counterparty, they're across the table from you. And you should rely on your financial advisor ultimately for advice on whether it's a good deal, a fair deal, and he negotiates with Goldman on your behalf. And as much as you trust any of your potential counterparties, you still need your financial advisor to overlook everything, oversee everything, and to make sure that you have advice at the end of the day. In the area of indemnities, it's one of the, as you enter into your final arrangements with Goldman Sachs, you will enter into a series of contracts with them, bond purchase agreements. And I'm sure you've entered into bond purchase agreements before. And what this says is, will have customary and appropriate indemnities in them. And you will indemnify the underwriter, just like you have probably in your past bond purchase agreements, with the review of the bond counsel and everybody against material statements and disclosure and similar matters. If you don't do that, if you ultimately end up not entering into these arrangements, Goldman Sachs will simply be performing advisory services to you. And because of the lower level of compensation, they want to be indemnified in an appendix A against a series of events. And I think what we had, I had discussed with the city attorney before, was that we want to go over that final indemnification, the one today, with Goldman Sachs's lawyer, because we continue to want to push back on that. What they have offered is standard. And how do we know it's standard? Well, first of all, we asked each of the potential investment banks that came before us to give us a copy of their proposed letter. They all came out pretty much the same. It's almost as if everybody on Wall Street is in cahoots against you. But actually, what happens is there's an industry practice, and the independent investment bankers will come up quite independently with essentially the same risk posture for what they're doing. That's also consistent with the similar letters that I've seen and negotiated on behalf of both private clients and public clients, where people enter into an engagement letter with a underwriter before the underwriter signs the bond purchase agreement. This letter acts as a bridge to that bond purchase agreement where the indemnifications are finally noted. Those are the, I think, the essential legal questions. If there are others, please feel free to ask.
Well, the only legal question, maybe there's two. I guess I don't understand on page four.
Right.
The second full paragraph about halfway down, where it talks about the, survive the termination of the agreement for a period of one year from the date of termination. What is that about? I don't know that I grasp.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Page four.
Right.
The second full paragraph about halfway down. It says, the sentence says, shall survive any such termination for a period of one year from the date of such termination.
Uh-huh. Okay, this, if, this relates to a situation where if for some reason, before their exclusivity period has ended, during the 18 months, we say, we don't want to use your services anymore. What they're at, what they want to make sure of is that we don't then turn around and pick somebody else after having sort of picked them dry and taken their intellectual capital, said, oh, well, now that we've got the whole package, now we've got the patented Goldman Sachs methodology, we're going to go to brand B and leave them out in the cold. And what they've said is, you can terminate us, for example, if you want to get rid of the project, you sell the project to somebody else, something like that, that's great. But if you resurrect the project within that year period, you've got to come back to them just as if you'd never terminated the agreement. So it's sort of a resurrection. We have a right to walk away from this agreement at any time, but we don't have the right to sort of take their product and their intellectual capital and then say, okay, now that we've got that, let's see if we can take it to China and get it done, you know, for people that are doing 10 cents an hour.
That's fair. Mr. Sledge, on behalf of the city of Victorville, you were involved in drafting this agreement?
Oh, yes, sir.
Are you like mine with Jeff Kinsel, you're recommending that we go with this agreement as presented?
What I would suggest is that we go, that you authorize the city manager, city attorney, and the team to finalize the agreement with them, because we'd like to, I like to try to extract a little bit more than the standard agreement when I'm working with a city like Victorville. And we've extracted more, but there may be a bit more that we want to do, just tweaking around the edges. But I would suggest we, you can authorize that, because we'll obviously not give up any points. But it's really up to you as to whether you do that this week or next week. That's your, not for a lawyer to tell you when to, when you want to sign an agreement.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we don't act on it tonight. The reason I wanted to continue it till the next meeting, if it was possible to do so, was to avoid this kind of a discussion, which puts a lot of heat on a lot of people. Not my intent, but I question, you and Mr. Kinsel, Mr. Barnett have responded to my questions, so, one member of the council, I am not going to ask for this matter. I haven't had to do it this way.
Hunter. Then I have a question. The council is saying that they want to tweak this even further. So what are we going to sign? I don't want to sign something that's being tweaked again, that there's going to be changes to.
Councilmember Hunter, the only latitude we're looking for is to actually tighten up the indemnification provisions. Right now, as Mr. Sledge has indicated, the indemnification is standard industry-wide. We want to see if there's an opportunity to tighten down the indemnification that we would have, the obligations that the city would have, and narrow the scope of that. That's the only thing we're looking for.
My point is here again, that we're still then negotiating on this contract. So what does it matter if it waits till the next meeting and comes back fully completed?
I think what we're, we're suggesting is that it would be approved in its current form. Again, if we can tighten it up, that would be beneficial to the city. Right now, again, it is a standard agreement that is consistent with the, with the practice.
Right. I'm not sure they'll give, but sort of negotiating here in public with their representative.
Well, Mr. Rothschild has a question.
We've got five well-educated people on this board, college degrees and everything else, we're good listeners. But like most of the adventures that we get into, there is a limit to what we know. And collectively, we'll make this best judgment. We've set a policy in play to go out and create this product and hopefully own it and have the revenue stream come back to us in this community. Things that you're involved in now are, I'm going to put on faith and trust. Buck Johns and Toms and Jeff Kinsel's presence here over the years have proven that they are honest and trustworthy people and have got a straightforward vision on what it is that we've asked them to venture into. So I'm going to rely heavily on that reputation, especially Jeff. He's done an incredible job with those hangers when we've had some serious problems and very similar light. The numbers may be a different magnitude, but the fact, the issues were still there and relevant. I had to put a lot of trust in that negotiations. The questions that Mr. Caldwell asks, we all sit here and wait because he's the attorney, and that's an area that we would rely heavily on. And if Terry's comfortable with the legal explanations that he's asked you for, the rest of it, I'm willing to put into your hands and say, let's move forward. Whatever tweaking you can do with Goldman Sachs, you know, in that area, that's, that's within your purview to do. So I'm prepared to move on this agreement this evening.
Thank you. I would like at this point to, to give the representative from Goldman Sachs a chance to address you and for you to, to ask him any questions you may have, regardless of whether you decide to act tonight or not. He is here now, and there's an opportunity for you to talk to him. He's Mr. Tim Romer. He's heads up their LA office, so he's a California-based, more than 20 years in the business. He's a managing director of Goldman Sachs, and he's the co-head of their infrastructure banking company. So, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Frankly, I don't mind answering the questions because we're very excited to be here. We think this is a terrific project. When we first got contacted about it, our firm got very interested. We've done a lot of work. We think it's a very viable project, and we really want to get started. So frankly, I'm happy to be here tonight. I live in LA. I'm happy to come back. But frankly, from our perspective, we want to dig in quick, and we want to get to work on this because we like this project and we want to make it happen. And the sooner we get the letter agreed to and signed, the more resources we can throw at this. And that's really, I think, the key message I want to communicate to you is, you know, Goldman has a great deal of experience. I think, as you've all heard tonight, we've, we've actually been the financing agent, the financing partner on 50% of the merchant projects that have been done recently. We know how to make them work. We know how to get them done. The engagement letter that you have in front of you today is similar to those we've used on all those other projects in financing. So I think you've heard it from others here. Just wanted to hear it from Goldman Sachs as well. This is a standard letter we use in all these assignments, and it's just the beginning of the relationship that we're going to have with you going forward. I think, as Ed indicated, there'll be other contracts and arrangements coming back forward with you. But what we are doing is we're willing to move forward with you because we believe in the project in Victorville on a basis upon which we don't get any compensation unless there's a successful financial close. And because we're taking that risk, we need to make sure our contracts are written in a way to protect us. Because what we are going to do over the next three, four, or five months is commit a substantial amount of resources, a substantial amount of intellectual capital, a substantial amount of experience, and the strength of our balance sheet, et cetera, behind this project. And so we want to be your partner. We want to go into it. And like any good partnership, you want to know going in what you have. I think this contract lays it out very clearly. As Jeff said, there's lots of moving parts. It's fairly complex. But I want to commend your team and your staff because they really dug into this contract. We've had a lot of conversations back and forth. What we sent was our standard form contract. We got back a contract that had a lot of red lines and a lot of edits to it, because again, we understood the situation. We worked very quickly to work through those. And so it's been a very, I think, back and forth process. I can say you have a good team. They are good negotiators. And unfortunately, I understand, I may still be negotiating with them on a couple of points. But, you know, bottom line, I think, when you look at this agreement, Mr. Mayor, I know you had one question about the word commitment. I want to convey to you the commitment Goldman has to this project tonight. We are a firm that very much believe in our reputation, and in our reputation comes first. And we're here today because we believe in the project. I do have some very good lawyers, though, who basically read the word commitment in a different way, as an indicated. You know, when they see the word commitment, they think it's a commitment to show up with dollars. We can't do that just yet because we haven't completed the due diligence. So that language is a very technical issue relative to the commitment of dollars, not the commitment of the firm and the interest of the firm. I think the other area you identified, which is addressed, which I just want to almost comment on too, is that there's a fine line between being a fiduciary and being a financing partner. You have others who are acting in a fiduciary capacity. We are here to bring lots of different tools to bear to get this financed. And on that last comment you had today, or question I had, is we've already begun to think about the equity partners, the equity players that are out there, and also the mezz debt players, and how to put a debt financing package together so that we can come back to you and deliver the full $750, $850 million that needed to get, that is needed to get this project done. So I'm happy to continue to ask more questions. Just want to give you that assurance and that commitment from the firm. Again, we are excited. We think this is a fascinating project and frankly, really want to just roll up our sleeves and get to work.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate you coming up. And as I said in the beginning, I apologize for you having to get caught up in, but it's essentially an internal communications issue. I went to New York with our original team and participated in the interviews with all of the houses like yours on Wall Street, was very impressed, and participated in the grading and the evaluation and the ultimate decision-making to hire Goldman Sachs. So I don't feel uncomfortable. You have collectively an outstanding reputation and track record, so that part of it does not, does not concern me. And again, I apologize for having to pull the item from consent calendar and a few suffer through our internal issues.
No, from our, from Goldman's perspective, no apologies are necessary. We want to make sure you understand, and if, happy to answer any, any questions today or further on.
Questions or comments, members of the council?
Just a comment. We, we do have a team that we hired to do this project for us, and so we have to rely on, on that information that we get. And we have partners here that have been with us for many years. So I feel comfortable with the agreement, and we've done this before. There's only that one item on indemnification that needs to be maybe tweaked, perhaps. And I would feel comfortable going ahead with it.
Anybody else? Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following in on what Councilman Cabralis said, and I did attend the trip to New York for the interviews and also the interviews here in Victorville. And I can tell you that Goldman Sachs is the gold standard when it comes to this type of financing. Their team and their credentials are impeccable. I don't have a great deal of expertise in this type of financing, but I did participate then beyond the selection of Goldman Sachs on the conference calls where our team, and there were more of our team members participating than what are in this room tonight, where our team went through the due diligence period with Goldman Sachs scrubbing down this proposal. And having listened to that process, I am satisfied that our team did the proper due diligence and effort in putting together this engagement letter with Goldman Sachs, and also that our team has the expertise and qualification to do that. And though I don't have the expertise myself, having listened to that, I'm comfortable in relying upon the expertise of our team.
Barnett?
I wanted to say one more thing. You know, I mentioned our team at the outset. There is a core team here that we have formed to handle the financing matters, and you've heard from three of them. There's a very important fourth member, as I mentioned, that's John Sullivan, who's your financial manager. I want to assure you, he was involved in every step of the way, and I believe John has indicated that you're in support of this recommendation.
Other questions or comments? Well, if not, then I'll move that the letter as presented, approved by the council, authorization for me to sign it, subject to the possibility of some adjustment to the indemnification language, if that becomes appropriate. Second. Well, our machine's not working. May we vote? unanimous. Go get us a sack full of money.
Thank you.
All right, I will invite the council and appropriate staff into closed session. You've already heard my comments about.
Thank you.
Where we'll be when we get out of closed session.